Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission of Wednesday, May 17, 2023. I call this meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Crandall.
Please rise. Follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we please have roll call?
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Davis, I see that he is absent. Commissioner McCacken, he is also absent tonight. Commissioner Prescott Loeffler.
Here.
Chair Pro Tem Camp.
Here.
Vice Chair Cameron Cosgrove.
Here.
And Chair McCann.
Here.
Thank you. We have no special orders of business. Minutes. We have the minutes from the last meeting. Does anybody have a?
Hi there. Yeah, I found some errors. I wrote those in to our professional staff who then corrected it. I saw a version of the correction online. So that, that version of the minutes, I can go with. I don't know if everyone else has seen them.
So does that mean you're making a motion?
Yes, I can make a motion.
Okay.
I will move approval of the minutes from, I think it's the May 3, as revised.
Okay.
Second.
Do we need to call out what those revisions were, Adam, or since they were online, it's fine?
I recommend that this time you just call out what those changes are.
Oh, I don't remember all of them, but there's just some inaccuracies on.
I remember what they were.
Somebody made a.
You said someone, one of the points you pointed out was that someone made a motion to approve an item, but that person wasn't here.
Right.
So it was someone else who made the motion. And then the other one was adding, correcting Jonathan's title.
Yes, that was it, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Is that sufficient, Adam?
Yes, I'll just, for the item that was seconded, it was item 5A, the approval of the minutes was seconded by Cosgrove.
Okay.
That's the correction.
And we corrected Jonathan's title.
Yes.
Okay.
So that, that, and all that encompasses in my motion.
Okay, so, so we have a motion and a second. Let's have a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
And one abstain, who's not at the meeting.
Two abstain.
Okay, so motion passes three with two abstentions and two absences. Is there anyone here to speak tonight on any item, on anything that is not on the agenda? Okay, just a sec, sir. Well, yeah, we'd love to, if you could hand your card to Adam, that would be great, and I'm going to read you some rules. Members of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone and, if you desire, state your name and/or city of residence for the record and make your presentations. Please limit your presentations to three minutes. And they'll have the little, for all speakers, they'll have the little green, yellow, red light at two, two minutes or two minutes and a half, the yellow lights goes. Yellow light comes on at two minutes, and you have one more minute, so.
I'll be briefer than that, I hope.
Okay, great.
George Gregory, North Beach, criminal. The Miramar Theater is still dragging down our neighborhood. I can't tell you how bad that thing is, how much I hate that building, and anybody has anything to do with it. I find it ironic that I have to come up with guest parking and stuff for my development and stuff when these buildings have no parking at all, they seem to have no ambition, they seem to be owned by people that have so much money that it doesn't matter. My second comment is, I'm very confused on conversions of condominiums and if affordable housing can be sold individually. Does that make any sense? And can I get, I guess I can't get a response, but maybe Adam or Zach or somebody can let me know in the future here. I'm hoping to develop my property. It goes street to street. I'd like to divide the property so I don't have to go through all the emotion, any upgrades and stuff to bring everything up to current codes, but if I, if push comes to shove, I have to convert the whole thing and do the new building I want to do, and I need to be able to sell some of it, or I got to take on a mortgage I probably can't qualify for because I'm self-employed. You know, we write everything off, we're supposed to, it's the only way to survive. So anyways, that's my only two comments. Just so you know, I've only been struggling with this project for 20 years, and I've been a criminal for about half of that. So anyways, thanks for your time, folks.
Thank you. It was George, right?
Yeah, George Gregory.
Thank you, George. So, yeah, we're not going to engage in a, hey, here's what you need to do, this and that. I would recommend that you exchange information with Mr. Otamian, and he will direct you to the right people to talk to.
I will contact you, Mr. Sir.
Great, thank you, Adam. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Thanks, folks.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? Okay. Consent calendar, we have no consent calendar items, no public hearings. Number nine, new business, local roadway safety program. I, it's not a public hearing, so I guess I don't have to open it.
Correct.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Zach Pontson, Assistant City Engineer. Tonight with me, I have Ryan Kim, our Senior Traffic Engineer. We'll be giving a brief presentation on our local road safety program that we'll be looking for a recommendation for forwarding to City Council. With that, I'll have Ryan do a brief presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Kim, Senior Traffic Engineer. Tonight, I'd like to have a presentation for Local Roadway Safety Program, which is The background, Local Roadway Safety Plan, which is LRSP, is a tool to improve traffic safety on local roadways. The LRSP provides a framework to identify, analyzing, and prioritizing roadway safety improvements on local roadways. For this project, city applied for the LRSP grant in February 2020 and approved a professional services agreement with Akimni Hon and Associates to prepare its report in April 2020. Summary is, the vision of this LRSP is to reduce traffic fatalities and serious injuries in our local roadways. Its specifics are to find high-risk collision locations, demonstrate the benefits of the comprehensive safety program and systemic process, plan future safety improvements, and define safety projects for the future opportunities. The outcomes of this report are to identify and prioritize engineering and non-infrastructural safety measures, prepare short and long-term implementation, and define potential projects for HSIP fundings, which is a highway safety improvement program. Its benefits are to identify high collision areas, assign systemic process for future improvements, and define potential projects for future HSIP grant fundings. This map is showing number of collisions per intersection happened during 2015 to 2019. As you can see, the red circle, especially three locations, represents the top collision intersections, including, which includes the Avenida Pico at I-5 freeway ramp. The second one is the Avenida Palizada at El Camino Real, and the last one is the El Camino Real at I-5 freeway ramp. It's hard to see, but here, let me maximize this. Let's see. This is mid-block collisions. This map is representing the mid-block collision per roadway segments, and the red line, we have two red lines, which is the highest collision segments, includes, including the Avenida Pico between the I-5 freeway ramp and the St. Clement High School entrance, and the second one is the Avenida Del Mar between El Camino Real and Ola Vista. This table, this engineering countermeasure tables, is provided the citywide countermeasure toolbox under engineering approach. So among the countermeasures, NS-15, which is here, as a cursor here, NS-15 is, which is direction, median openings to allow or restrict left turns and U-turns to allow right turn in, right turn out traffic, is the most effective measures per this report. Also, we have another non-engineering countermeasures, which includes enforcement, education, emergency services, and emerging technology, as shown in the, in the table. I'm ready to take questions.
I've got a question. Scott? I've got a question.
Sorry, go ahead.
Is this plan something that is used in other cities? And so was it just basically a form that our information was put into?
So my understanding is.
Is this standard practice around the state?
This is a, this is a program that a lot of cities are utilizing, and it helps us establish a baseline and analysis of a lot of the streets in our cities to find our trouble areas. And then, and also, when you have this adopted plan, it shows the city's effort in obtaining these grants that also ask if we're adopting these plans. And so that shows that we, a lot of the benefit of adopting this program is, you see a cost-benefit ratio of types of improvements that can be done to improve safety on the roadway. So, yes, other cities are utilizing this program. And one thing I will echo too, as I mentioned in the report, that we're not approving any specific projects with this. We, this, this study that was done was, was grant-funded, but also not big enough to do a detailed analysis of these, these trouble areas that they did identify.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get to. So, our information is unique, but the format and the approach is pretty typical around the cities around here.
I think that's a good way to put it, yeah.
Good, that's what I needed to know.
Any other questions? I have a question. So, I mean, this looks great as a start, okay. In the back, case study sheets, Appendix A, case study sheets, is this, is this intended as like a prioritization of what should be done? And like, in what priority?
Not so much as a priority list. It gives us identified areas that they saw they had concerns with. And so some of these locations, for example, Caí de Cerro was identified, and, and we, when we're doing future projects, we're going to identify and use these studies to, to help us guide where to do our next projects. And so they've identified these lists of these particular projects, and staff will take into consideration some of their recommendations. Some of them are, are going to need very extensive studies afterwards. One of the main corridors is El Camino Real, and they're looking at, you know, Del Mar to Valencia area with a lot of broadside collisions of the streets exiting those side streets. One of their recommendations is putting El Camino Real down to one lane in each direction. We're not recommending that tonight, we're not approving that tonight, but that is one of the things that they think we should consider to help reduce accidents. To actually do that would take a very extensive study, have to go through the county, we'd have to adopt and change our master plan of arterial highways, that would be, it's, this is just being a tool to identify areas of concerns that we're, can look at in the future, and this helps us get grants to help look at, look at these locations.
Okay, yeah, because it seemed to me that the, these locations in the, in the case study sheets weren't necessarily like, I'm just, and looking at, I didn't see any of the intersections, for example. Well, here's the one, Palizada and Camino Real, but, you know, it's like a bunch of mid-block stuff, which seems less dangerous than intersections, you know? If you have 31 collisions at three different intersections in town, it seems like those are where you should focus your priority first.
And that's something to note with those big red dots, a lot of these things, if it's a freeway off-ramp with one of our streets, there's a little, very little we can do, other than work with Caltrans to try to get new striping done or improve line of sight with Caltrans on their layouts. That's actually something I am working on with one of those red dots right now.
Okay.
Regardless of this study, it's just something we're aware of, and it helps us work on future projects, though, you're right.
Right, okay. Any other questions?
Zach, can you explain the grant? So I see the countermeasures here that are part of the research. Are we allowed, if the council accepts, are we allowed to consider those countermeasures now, or does it have to go through additional steps, more research?
Each one of those projects is just something we're looking at. We can utilize an adopted LSRP to help us apply for these types of grants. So in the back, in Section 10, it kind of lists out like four or five different grant opportunities. And so the, an adopted LSRP, especially with one of these locations, could be a good grant opportunity for us. And so we can say, you know, location eight, as shown in our adopted LSRP, is something that we want to apply a grant for. And then there would be further analysis on most of these applications. We're definitely not going to go out and take El Camino Real down to two lanes without very extensive studies.
The grant process, can you give me an estimated time, how long it took to?
Each one varies, and I'll give you an example, one we're working on now has been two and a half years. And so it, it can vary based on which one it is and all the requirements you have to do for it. Some grants are pretty easy to do, some are very extensive and very labor-intensive to where you're almost hiring a consultant just to get you through it.
That's my next question, if we have a consultant to write the grant.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question.
Please.
Zach, this, so it's called a safety plan, so obviously it's about making our roads safer. Is there any emphasis on improving traffic flow, or is it just identifying the areas that are of concern safety-wise?
This particular study is looking mostly at safety, and like I said, kind of, I'm going to keep kind of pointing back to that project where they're looking at traffic flow on El Camino Real, obviously reducing from four lanes to two is going to greatly affect the traffic flow. So those would be some of that next step studies that would have to be done. So this program and this is simply a tool that, in our toolbox, that can now be used to identify areas of concern, and obviously accident data is one of them. And we use that already, but this tool helps show that these grant, people offering the grants and these agencies, that we are utilizing a kind of a standardized format to, in our analysis and in our approach for our projects that we're applying for grants for.
Okay. Are there grants available for traffic flow studies?
There's a lot of grants out there for a lot of different things, bicycle grants, capacity grants, and synchronization grants. And so we, we, like right now, a couple of years ago, we did have, I think it was Project P or I, I forget which one, has synchronization of El Camino Real. And so we're going to be looking to reuse one of those grants coming up to synchronize it with Palizada, which somewhat helps with this application, that one of these locations is mentioning Palizada. So this would be a helpful grant, but, to help us synchronize with it. So there's a, there's a kind of a two options with that. We'll be looking at capacity, but also safety at the same time.
Okay, thanks.
Do we need to ask about disclosures and conflicts on this item?
Not on the items tonight. That's only with adjudicatory items, and so you don't have to worry about that part, but we do need public comments.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm open to a motion.
I've got one more question.
Okay.
How often is this updated? Who, who does it, or is it a continuous process as numbers come in?
In the report, it actually recommends an update every five to six years, I believe, in there, and so.
That seemed pretty long.
There are check-in points that it recommends that we look at this, I believe it says quarterly or semi-annually, and that, are we following it, are we doing it? And so there are recommendations for us to update this with times, yeah.
There's some comments I wanted to make.
Okay, please.
Okay, so when I first read this, I was really excited, like, wow, we have data, it's showing us hotspots, excellent, that's what we need, we need to be data-driven. And, you know, I, I actually kind of remember when it was being approved at council, and I think there was an expectation that there might be solutions along with the data, and And in particular, you know, there are delineators on El Camino Real around the Ralphs that are tempor, were temporary at the time, they seem to be longer-lasting, and my expectation of, it was going to discuss things like that, solutions, options. So, I got excited. Then I realized, no, not really, this is just data, this is just, here's where you're at. Now, we can, and the process is, we can take this data and we can, it can be used to pursue grants that would study solutions. Fair enough. So, then I started thinking, well, we, should we be, should we be thinking about what kind of grants we should be pursuing and maybe make a recommendation to council? And I realized, probably not. As I, I think that, I'm just, this is just my concern. We have like, Zach, how many people are in your department for traffic? Is it two engineers?
We have two full-time people in traffic, and then I'm partially in traffic with other departments.
So, two full, two FTEs?
Yeah.
And you guys are also fielding a lot of the resident concerns and complaints about traffic in their neighborhoods, is that correct?
Daily, yes.
So, that consumes a great deal of your time?
Yes.
And I would assume that council members may also weigh in with, you know, escalating complaints and so forth, and that would go onto your plate as well. So, I started to realize, our team is swamped. And their ability to have bandwidth to even write grants to go pursue solutions is limited. So, then I started, I went from really excited to really disappointed. And I, I think the only message that I feel needs to be conveyed, if we can convey it, is that we should be looking into some of the opportunities for grants to look at solutions as we have, and my feeling is that there could be some opportunity with this place-making in North Beach that is now council priority. And I'm going to show you guys from our general plan, the T-zone. And the whole vision of the T-zone is highly walkable, pedestrian-oriented, commercial, people walking around our, that area, shopping, dining. And that's also one of the big hotspots for accidents and things like that. And it's a confluence of no parking, tight, tight spaces, and people running across the street to, because there is no parking, and so they're running across the street, and you've got that, you've got people parallel parking, so that takes time, so that blocks a lane. And so, it, I, I don't know, I might, maybe just naive, but I'm thinking, you know, there's opportunities, perhaps, to look at things more comprehensively if we're going to do place-making in North Beach, to think about the fact that we're trying to activate at North Beach, we already have a T-zone that's really active right now, and there is some synergy between those two areas from a planning standpoint. And as a city planner, there's opportunities there that we could look at for traffic flow, parking, that would address a lot of the, the hotspots that we have. So, I guess this is just a plea, you know, we've got Mr. Teaming here, who's our city planner, we've got Zach, who, and our city traffic engineer, that when you're going forward to council with this, and would be to, you know, make your professional recommendations as you, as city planners, on opportunities for pursuing some grants, that as we're doing place-making in North Beach and other areas, we can also be applying for grants that can study things like El Camino Real, and give us some opportunities for addressing some of our traffic concerns. So, it's really more of my suggestion to staff, when they're making their professional recommendations to our council, who, really ultimately, they're setting the priorities. We're, 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 we don't do that here. Would be to, you know, do your best, I know you're overwhelmed, you're overworked, just do your best if you can to make professional, when you're making your professional recommendations, to consider strategic investments in grants and other things to look at some of our traffic concerns that have just been so well documented in this, in this report here. Just had to say it.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion, or have any other comments?
I'll go ahead and make a, make a motion. I recommend, let's see, we don't have CEQA, we do have CEQA finding. We recommend that the city council determine that the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guidelines, Section 15306, Class 6 Information Collection of the State CEQA Guidelines, and that we forward the LRSP to the city council for adoption as a tool to be used to address local roadway safety issues and needs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Next item, 9B, Traffic Calming Measures on Avenida Presidio Between Cali Cortez and North La Esperanza. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Good evening, planning commissioners, Zach Ponson, Assistant City Engineer. Tonight with me, I have Ryan Kim, our Senior Civil Traffic Engineer. We bring forward a proposal for some traffic calming measures on Cali Presidio in the section between North La Esperanza and-
Cali Cortez.
Cali Cortez, thank you. This was brought to us from the public, and staff did some evaluation, and Ryan Kim has a brief presentation for us.
Good evening, again. I'm Ryan Kim, Senior Traffic Engineer. This presentation is about the Presidio Traffic Calming. Background is, the Presidio is a senior apartment located at 105 Avenida Presidio. The streets, the street segment is Avenida Presidio between Cali Cortez and North La Esperanza. Since 2015, CD has received occasional speeding complaints, including traffic calming petitions in 2018. In 2022, CD received a pedestrian crossing signage near the senior apartments, and CD installed a crossing pedestrian sign on each approach to the apartment. This location map is showing the subject segments in the green segment, along the Avenida Presidio between Cali Cortez and North La Esperanza. Per the 2023 request, staff conducted a traffic calming analysis and found that 85th percentile speed is 30 miles per hour, the average daily traffic, which is ADT, ADT, is 1,446 vehicles per day. Two collisions in the last three years, and four pedestrian generators near that apartment. Also, this segment has sidewalk or pathway issues, and that's why we also have our discretionary factors was applied to this analysis. Based on the this analysis, the Avenida Presidio segment, it is qualified for traffic calming measures. Staff collected the traffic data at the two locations near the apartment and found similar results. As you can see, we have two locations here and have a same 85th percentile speed of 30 miles per hour, and the daily traffic volume is, is also more than 1,400 vehicles per day. Per this traffic calming eligibility worksheet, the minimum total score of, score of the 51 points is required for the residential neighborhood to qualify for the traffic calming treatments. This worksheet shows that the subject segment scored 52 points, thus, this segment is eligible for traffic calming measures. And specifically, we have 10 points for speed, two points for crashes, and 20 points for pedestrian generators, 10 points for sidewalks or pathway issues, and lastly, 10 points for discretionary factors. The proposed traffic calming measures are one electronic speed feedback sign on the southbound Avenida Presidio approach to the apartment, which is for the downhill traffic. And second one is more red curves near the apartment's driveways. Currently, it's some place, some occasion is missing. And the third one is removal of red curve near the old city hall driveways to compensate the additional red curves in the other side of the apartment. Fourth one is edge line installation on both sides of the Avenida Presidio between Cali Cortez and North La Esperanza to reduce, try to reduce this approaching speed to the apartment. This map shows the location of each measures. So, in here, with the speed feedback sign here, and the approach here, and the next one is installing additional red curves to the, near the driveway. And third one is removal red curves on, along the old city hall side. And the last one is the installation of the edge lines along the, the segment.
Any questions? Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Is the electronic vehicle speed feedback sign, is that permanent, or would that be permanent?
Yes, it is permanent.
Thank you.
Got a question. So, on attachment four, there's a symbol of a crosswalk or pedestrian, I think, it says existing. Can you help me understand what you're conveying there?
Is this one?
Yes, uh-huh. What does that symbol mean?
That says, uh, crossing pedestrian. We are trying to warn the drivers there might be a crossing pedestrians.
I see, so what, this is proposing a new sign? Oh, this says existing?
This is newly installed last year.
Last year, okay, gotcha. Okay. Is it, your experience, you're seeing a lot of mid-block crossings, then?
Per our counts, not that many, but my concern, our concern was, because most of the crossing could be a senior citizens near the senior apartments. They may need a longer crossing time than the, any regular adults. So, we, that's why we, we decided to install it to warn the drivers in advance.
And is, is this to solve a mid-block crossing situation?
Actually, the J-Work cross, J-Work is legal right now, in the, starting of, as of January 1st this year, so.
Yeah, so let's call it mid-block, because I'm not judging whether it's right or wrong, I'm just trying to determine, is this a, is this something that occurs frequently? And is that something you guys considered in terms of the safety of the, the measures that you're providing? Is that you're seeing a trend of the mid-block cross, crossing? And I'm just curious what other things could be done to draw attention to motorists that there's a mid-block crossing? I would maybe suggest to you, on the downhill side, a sign close to where you have the speed indicator could also be mid-block cross, you know, that same symbol up there as well, because they're coming down the hill, coming around the curve, and boom, there's people crossing. I'm just trying to elicit, is that kind of part of your thoughts are?
Yeah, and, and we did put this sign out there, it is directioned in the downhill side out there.
Is it, okay.
I think it is kind of close to that electronic speed sign location. And, and this is really from parking on the other side of the street. And so, it's not really a confined area, so it's a long stretch.
Because on my diagram, you got the speed sign up here, and it says existing down here, at the bottom of the hill, not at the top.
Oh, I, I think-
There is another one.
There's one, there should be one more up top, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, it's just missing?
On the, in the bottom of the, when you give the screen-
Well, it's on, they're saying there.
On the bottom of the plan.
This, this segment goes here.
So, they're match long.
Gotcha, okay, thanks for explaining that to me.
So, there is one on the downhill, and those, those were installed last year after some complaints, and, because we did, their request was for crosswalk stop signs, stuff like that, which we, we're never, we're not going to recommend a crosswalk in this area, it's, it's on a current, a hill and a curve.
Yeah.
It would be more unsafe to install an actual crosswalk, same with the stop sign. So, we're kind of limited into just warning drivers that people are crossing in the area.
What's the timing on doing the restriping?
There's a chance we can add it into the summers program, that we, even if we don't-
Is it like the slurry?
It's usually done with the next slurry, yeah. So, it's usually done with the next slurry. If this street has been slurried recently and isn't scheduled for pretty far out, we can add, we will add this street for just the striping. We won't slurry it again, but we'll just add the striping with this summers batch.
All the questions I have, thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
I see there, there's an additional recommendation to request police services to consider increasing speed enforcement near the apartment complex on Presidio, Avenida Presidio. So, that is part of this recommendation as well?
Yes, it is, and that's part of our, our toolbox, I guess, per se, and our city's traffic calming and resource manual does say that we should be doing one of that kind of first. First, you put out a trailer, which we've done a couple of times, then we ask for police enforcement to step up a little bit, and then, then we start getting into these physical permanent measures. So, we actually have already had the trailer out there occasionally, and this will just also, we'll ask the police to show up every now and then.
Thanks.
Questions? Is there anybody, members of the public that would like to speak on this issue?
Chair, chair, we've got two comments. I will work the clock, and I can call them up unless you'd rather do that yourself.
Oh, no, you can, great, thank you. Just as a friendly reminder, there's a three-minute limit.
Our first speaker is Deborah Marsing. Would that be Pamela Goodman?
Is that okay?
Absolutely, yeah.
May I stand here?
Yes.
It's so dangerous, you know, if, some of the elderly people have to park on the other side, and they have to cross over, they have to walk sometimes with a wheelchair, and the cars come so fast down the hill. Plus, when I'm trying to drive into our disabled parking lot, as I go to drive in, the cars are racing down, and I can't see, I can't see if they're coming, you see? So, there's got to be signs, there's got to be signs, and there's got to be some posts in the road. It's so dangerous. And, and cars have been smashed, too, by people coming home late at night. But those people who live at the top of the hill, they don't give a damn about the speed limit. Okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Deborah Marsing?
Well, thank you. I came because I didn't know the specifics of what you were going to recommend, so this is helpful, and it was in the back. And my concern at the time was not to have something that was so large in its extent, so extensive that it would disrupt the use of what people do to live there in their homes, both their seniors' center, and I live in the condos above. And so not to disrupt our home and our community because of the speedsters that go up and down before they get to our community. So my concern was how much would be changing. And I don't think there is much changing that's so extensive that it affects our community, two communities, just like Victoria has a lot of residents and lots of traffic, and people still can park and use their street for their community. So my concern was how much was going to be affected, but it appears with the elimination of the red in front of the old city hall, and to change the spacing for the new red seems to be a wash. So the people that use that parking on the street, I sit where I enjoy the sun, and so I see all the people that come by. And so they are the professionals that serve that, those elderly. They are the family members. They are the regular people that live there. There is quite an extensive support system that goes in and out of this building that are not residences, and that's the parking they use. So it's a lively community that needs their parking. My community, which is the condo above, also uses it, but more on the upper end, that is not so affected. So I'm glad to see it's not extensive, that it doesn't change the community's needs. So, thank you. I didn't see the plan before I came, I wouldn't have needed to come. So, oh, and the other thing is, on your point system, you have the 10 points for the sidewalks, but your, your extent of your analysis area far exceeds the point of your concern in front of this. So you got your 10 points because you extended all the way up to Cortez, but if you looked at right in front of that, it wouldn't have been that long. So it wouldn't have been over 52. I'm happy to have it looked at. I'm just saying someone was clever on how they defined what area they're looking at, and then what area you're looking at. I just, it didn't go by me. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone for discussion?
I think the--
Commissioners, one second. We also had some written public comments, just to note for the record.
Yeah, I saw two written.
Yes, those should have been emailed to--
Both were in support of the project.
Do we have written copies, if anybody has not seen them?
Yeah, they were, they were sent electronically, both supporting the project. So as we, as we, I was kind of alluring to in the previous item, the staff is getting requests for these kind of support services left and right, and it takes a lot of time to do the work. So you're here, you're getting attention, and that's a good thing, and thank you for coming. Your, your comments were helpful. So I want to commend the staff on what they've done. I think this is excellent. The things that you're recommending are good, so I support, I support the staff recommendations.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm supportive of this as well. I appreciate you guys digging into it and trying to find workable solutions that'll make it safer out there for everybody. So with that, I'm open to a motion.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I will move staff recommendations tonight, that we recommend the city council to determine that this project is categorically exempt from the CEQA guidelines, and that we forward to the city council for these following proposed traffic calming measures. A, install an electronic speed feedback sign, red curb and edge lines. B, appropriate the required funds from the traffic calming budget. And C, request police services to consider increasing speed enforcement near the apartment complex at 105 Avenida Presidio.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hope it's safer out there for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The processes as we go along, and I obviously was joking about the two hours. It's, you know, five to 10 minutes, just as a brief legal update. And obviously, if you have any questions, please let me know. Tonight, we're going to be talking about due process, specifically procedural due process, because there are a few types of due process. And the purposes of these trainings are really to do a high-level overview of each topic. If you do have, obviously, any questions that you ever have, please reach out to me. I'm always available whenever you need me. So what is due process? It's the applicant's constitutional right to due process of law when the body is making a decision that could impact the applicant's property rights. Due process comes from numerous areas under the law. We have due process rights from our state and federal constitutions. We have procedural due process, which is what we're talking about today. And we also have substantive due process, which we're not talking about today, but in a very quick nutshell, substantive due process ensures that regulations imposed by the government are rationally and reasonably relate, rationally and reasonably advance a legitimate governmental purpose. So when we're talking about procedural due process, the whole concept is to make sure when you all make a decision, that decision-making process was fair. And how do we do that? We make sure that the affected party knows what evidence the decision is based on, that the affected party has an opportunity to rebut or comment on the evidence. The decision-maker must hear all the evidence, and the decision-maker must not be biased or have, or have prejudged the matter. As commissioners, you must exercise the powers with, your powers with disinterested skill, zeal, and diligence, and for the benefit of the public. And just on the last point, just for an example, if we have a commissioner that writes an article against a project, a newspaper article, that is likely going to establish that the commissioner prejudiced the project, and is going to probably establish bias. However, what if that commissioner, I do a lot of social media training, so what if we have a commissioner that simply retweeted an article that was against the project, or gave a thumbs up to an article that is against the project? You can see how we get in a more gray area. But if you ever have those issues, I, the point of giving you those examples that can kind of, kind of be more in the gray area, again, please ask me any questions if you, or staff, too, if you ever have any of those issues and you have those questions. Because we want to make sure that the decision-making process is fair. So the evidence that the applicant receives, they receive the materials that are in the agenda, the testimony at the hearing, of course, and then we have the ex-party disclosures by the commissioners. So that's considered part of the evidence. In the next few slides, we're going to talk about what is ex-party. So an ex-party contact is, or communications occur when the decision-makers receive evidence outside of the notice hearing. So as I mentioned at our last meeting, it's really something, or our last hearing, it's really any information that is received outside of the agenda packet. And I have examples later on in the presentation, but generally, you, you kind of want to think of this with an open mind, kind of broadly, and kind of think outside the box. Did you receive any information that was not a part of the agenda?
Can I ask you a question about that?
Of course.
That's really, that's really applies us a lot. Because we, you know, focus on small subset of projects versus city council gets all the time. So we have more time, and we do deeper dives, and sometimes we'll do sidewalks.
Yes.
And how would, and typically, what we've done in the past is, we would, once the matter's been introduced and we're on the, before we introduce any commentary out of our own, we would disclose, oh, on this date, we did a, I did a sidewalk, and this is what I observed, you know, as part of my sidewalk. And then I would introduce that to everybody that I observed these things. Is that, is that best practice, or is there a better way of handling that?
Nope, that's exactly what we want to do, and we will get to that later on in the presentation. No, but that's exactly what you want to do, and what you should be doing.
Okay, great.
Also, on the, what is procedural due process? And you have the line, "The affected party has the opportunity to comment on or rebut the evidence." So we've opened the meeting, we've had public comment, we've had a presentation by the applicant, staff does their presentation, it goes to discussion, and recall life experiences that may affect the project, that we've seen other projects in our career that, do we then have to open it up to the applicant if he wants to rebut those?
Yeah, so we, there's, there's a slide on later on, too. You guys are jumping ahead. You guys are smart. So if we get through the hearing, let's say we get through the hearing process, and I'll skip this slide when we get to it, and you, all of a sudden, something just triggers your memory, and you believe there's something that you need to disclose. Obviously, we don't want to panic, but we want to pause the hearing wherever we are in the process. So even if we've already gone through, like, say, public hearing, and the applicant has had an opportunity to speak already, we want to give the applicant another opportunity, because that is additional evidence that they did not already have. And we would, so all we would do, if, even if the public hearing has closed, we would reopen that up, and we would allow the applicant to speak again, in that case, just to make sure that they have that opportunity to hear and address all the evidence.
But I think, if I understood Bart's question correctly, let's say the applicant makes a presentation, and then, you know, commissioners comment or whatever, then 40 people line up to give public testimony. Do we at the end invite the applicant back up so that he can dispute or refute any of the stuff that the 40 people said?
Yes.
Okay.
And likewise, we would allow them to refute or dispute something if something came up from the commissioners, too. That's why we want to be, try to be careful, and I know it's not always possible to disclose in the beginning of the hearing. Okay?
Could I make a recommendation based on that? Since we do get communication from the constituent body out there, they're not in the packet in our, you know, I will read them online, but I, I don't download them, but we should have those in front of us as well.
You mean, public comments?
Public comments.
Um, Adam?
If that's the case, you know, and we're all getting that information, it should be part of the packet as well, so that we can refer back, or someone says, well, we sent that to you. And I just think it could cloud the issue. We don't have it.
Right, right. And I can certainly make that recommendation to staff. I don't know if that is, if it's just because they come in so late sometimes for public comments, written public comments.
For written public comments, those are typically received after the, the packet has been published and made available online, and it's, that's what people are writing in response to. So it wouldn't, it would be difficult to put it into the, into, into your packets which get delivered at, basically at the same time as it's published online. What we have done in the past is a lot of late, like, really late submissions, say, after noon on a planning commission day, we'll tend to bring those printed copies for everybody, but what we try to do is email them for your review before the meeting. They do, then they all remain as part of the public record. They're, they're maintained by the city.
I can certainly have that discussion and see if we can get the copies here.
Only because that sometimes I have brought up an informational comment that was made in one of the letters, maybe on a height limit, or, you know, an encroachment, and that person is not here. However, I'm bringing that up as--
Right. Understood. I can certainly have a further discussion with staff on that. So what does due process require? So because the affected party has a right to know and comment on the basis for the decision, and be provided the opportunity to rebut the evidence, decision-makers should either avoid ex-party contacts, but as Commissioner Cosgrove noted, it's not always, you know, so easy, and you want to go out there, and you want to look at things and know things, and that's totally okay. So then, the alternative is that we need to disclose all facts gathered outside the hearing, also known as ex-party contacts. And we've kind of already gone over this, but this is kind of the order of things, and Chair McCann followed this the other, or our last meeting, he did a wonderful job. So we would call the item, or the chair would call the item, open the public hearing. That's when commissioners would make their disclosures. You would disclose all ex-party communications and conflicts of interest. We would receive the staff report, the applicant, give the applicant an opportunity to present evidence and comment on disclosures, and allow public comment, and then we would give the applicant an opportunity to rebut. And then, of course, it goes to the commission for their comments and to vote. So what if I forgot, which somebody already mentioned? But yeah, if we get anywhere in the hearing, or during the process, that we realize that someone forgot to disclose something, we would simply pause and back up, and we would just make sure that the applicant has the opportunity to hear that evidence and to rebut that evidence. And then we would just continue on. So when you're making a public disclosure, you want to make sure that you give enough detail, and there is sufficient detail, so that the applicant knows what facts are going into the decision, that the applicant knows what evidence could potentially address or rebut those facts, and that, of course, it's important for the other commissioners to know, you know, what you're basing your decision on as well. And here are some of the examples that we kind of touched upon earlier, but, you know, site visits, if you speak with a party, or the public, or a witness, conducting outside research, reading articles, reading social media. Again, bottom line is, if it's anything not in the staff report, you want to disclose it. And I would generally recommend to err on the side of caution. It's, you know, more process for the applicant is better than less. Yeah?
So on this slide, you have like the second bullet, speaking with parties public. I mean, we, part of what is interesting is, we're part of the community, you know, we're citizens, and we're in the community, and you get approached, and you get told opinions. You know, I can be walking my dog, and someone can say, you know, I, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
What am I supposed to do? Ah, I can't hear you, la, la, la. Do I, uh-uh.
I mean--
Do I have to disclose? Oh, when I was walking my dog, so-and-so said to me the following. I mean, at what point does it get to be--
Right.
Too much?
Right, right. And there are, there's are certain rules that you don't, you don't have to make certain disclosures like that, and I can get you more information on-- disclosures like that, and I can get you more information on that, and it's obviously within reason. And it, to the, I would, though, if you can remember it, you say, so, you know, I met a gentleman and walking his dog the other day, and he said X, and that's, you know, then we move on.
Okay.
If you can. Obviously, it's, like you said, you're out there every day, you are a citizen yourself, so...
And you generalize and say, oh, I've heard, you know, I've heard several supportive comments, or I've heard several unsupportive comments, and leave it general?
Yeah, you can. Yeah.
Okay.
That's appropriate, too.
Okay.
Yeah, obviously, it's with, obviously, you also, it has to be within your memory, too, and what you can remember.
Okay. Thanks.
Of course. So I'll be here, of course, at the, any hearings, and to remind you about the process. I'll help you if, you know, we want to make sure the disclosures are sufficient and have that enough, as much information as you do have, and so that we can provide that fair process. And again, I'll ask questions, and of course, ultimately, help you uphold the Constitution. So like I said, going forward, we would like, or I would like to do some, you know, briefed trainings. I hope you find this helpful. I find it helpful. Good, good. But if you have any topics that you would like to talk about, too, please let me know. These are just some examples. I also realize I also could do a CEQA one that I forgot on here. And obviously, anytime you have other questions, I'm always here again.
Always, exciting.
Is it all of this stuff?
I like the... So, another law from, I don't remember their name.
We just had one the other day with Elizabeth.
Ethics. Ethics training.
Oh, was that ethics?
Yeah, that's right. She did that.
Good, yeah.
So meeting procedures, that might be...
Yeah, that's a great one, too.
Yeah.
And like I said, I'm not, it's only when we, I don't want to be doing this at 10:00 at night, and I'm sure you don't either when we have.
The last two were there.
Okay.
And like I say...
Good to know. Thank you for the feedback.
The CEQA one sounds, you know, always pertinent. What do you think collectively about maybe Housing Accountability Act? Do we need, I think it'd be good to get a little bit of exposure to that.
Can we do that, Adam? Like, outside of these legal things? Can we do some SB 9 and that kind of stuff?
Absolutely. If there's some specific training, especially on state laws, especially newly adopted state laws, we could definitely set that up. If there are specifics, such as the Housing Accountability Act that you'd like, or other state laws, if you, maybe one thing we could do in a future meeting is set up, or identify a number of those types of trainings or study sessions you'd like, and we can kind of organize them into hour chunks and start tackling those. Absolutely. If it's, I can look into the Housing Accountability Act and what we can provide on that. Otherwise, maybe at the next meeting, during the comments at the end, I can bring up a number of suggestions, and if the commission has some recommendations or things that they would specifically like to receive training on, we can organize a kind of a training schedule, call it.
I would like a yearly update on the amendments.
Yeah, legislative updates, absolutely.
Jen, real quick, so you know, in our binders that we get each week, there's a section bylaws, and it has all the procedures in it for running an all-the-meeting. You might just take a look at those and see if they're updated to how you like to see it done.
That's very helpful, because I did not know that.
I will, I can give you a copy. This is the one out of my book. And it'll be replaced.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I'm all done.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Did we give you sufficient time? Do we need to rebut what she said?
We have a line.
Old business, there's no old business, reports of commissioners and staff. I have one, which is, hopefully, I will not be at the June 7 meeting. If my son qualifies for a certain track meet, I won't be here, so...
Congratulations.
That'll be exciting.
I still got to qualify, yeah.
Is that CIM?
No, NCA finals.
Oh, college? That's a big deal, like in Oregon?
It's in Austin, but yeah.
That's a big deal.
Yeah.
Wait, I'm going to be, I'm not going to be here for the DRS.
Okay.
Commissioner Crandall's back, so...
I'm back. I'm back.
I'll be here.
That's next Wednesday. I won't be here.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's the DRS.
Design review.
Okay.
The 24th?
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
Chair, would you be available to sit in as the alternate for that meeting? If so, we'll route...
That's the 24th, right?
Yeah.
No, because I'll be at the regional track meet in Sacramento.
Okay.
That day, so...
Then we will, I'm sure we'll have no problem getting by with two.
Yeah.
Anything else to discuss? Then I'm open to a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. Motion to adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission will be held Wednesday, June 7, 2023, at 6:00 PM at the San Clemente City Hall Council Chamber, located at 910 Caie, ooh, I cannot pronounce that, help me, Neir, how do I pronounce this, or the street?
Negocio.
Negocio, second floor, San Clemente, California.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.